Okay, well, my clock just turned six thirty. And I see that we have a forum present in the room, so I will call a meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item up on our agenda is our consent agenda. Under consent agenda, we have vouchers totaling two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and eight cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Any questions regarding the vouchers? Next, we have minutes from our June eighteen, twenty twenty-four meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Next is the purchase of a total of eighty Form twenty-five disconnect electric meters. For the electric department for fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars, eighty cents. Any comments on that, Mr. Styles?
We just need to purchase, uh, when we did our meter upgrade, we found that we needed more disconnect meters. So these are remote disconnect, meaning we can be within the proximity and not actually have to physically touch the meter. Do it remotely, so we need, need to reload on those.
That's uh, kind of when we're dealing with what, what we refer to sometimes as frequent flyers.
Yeah.
People that struggle with their electric.
People who have dogs or inaccessible meters a lot of times.
Right. It's a lot safer and a lot, uh, it's not easier to turn them back on too.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the, that's the other benefit.
Are these ones that just haven't been done yet, or they worn out?
Uh, we, when we redid the meters, we, I, we undercounted, so there's, there's, we need for some, um, and then we want to just swap some out. Got regular meters on them now, want to pull those out, keep those in reserve for replacements and then put these on.
The ones you were talking that you can do from here at City Hall?
No, well, they will be, uh, we get to that, yeah. That's actually, the AMI needs to be a tower installed.
Right now, it's an AMR.
Where you just drive.
Drive it, yeah.
Well, these are doing that.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, any questions regarding the, uh, electric disconnect meters? Okay, hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted. Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second? Councilman Jorgensen seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, we're now to our first opportunity for public comment. I see we have someone in the room from the public, formerly from the council, but now from the public.
Yeah.
David, would you like to address the council?
Yes, I would. I would like to thank those of you who came last night to our, uh, Big Lou with Big Lou at the Ig Lou. And, uh, we really had a great time and just thank you all for coming, that came. Mr. Jorgensen was there.
Like.
Lake. nearby, yeah, um, and as well as there was, uh, Danny Sheriff was there.
Jeff, Randy, Bradwell's there.
Manny.
Manny Lou, obviously.
Yeah. It was a good evening. I just want to thank you for participating and, and I think it's a great opportunity to have an event like that, that just to meet different people in the public and to hear what they have to say. I don't know if your ears got burned or not, Lou, but.
No, I, you know, but I think people, I do appreciate the accessibility. They know that, you know, if they want to, they talk to you, they know who you are and, and, uh, you know, we, I tried to talk to a lot of people and nobody really had any, had anything, uh, uh, burning nature on their minds, but, uh, I just, I know everybody really appreciates the geek, the get together and what I like is, uh, it just brings a lot of diverse groups from town together in one spot and, uh, their camaraderie and the, and the fellowship is, is very good.
So thank you all that, that came and those of you didn't, I'm just sorry for you.
There's a lot of people.
Not mad at you, just sorry for you.
Yeah.
There were some people that were there at nine thirty, did, were they able to?
We were done serving at about, uh, ten till eleven.
Holy cow.
Good for your business, good night.
Yeah, we had.
That's awesome.
You were easy to spot in that cool T-shirt.
Yeah, well.
But he, yeah, thank you also.
Well, uh, for, you know, thanks to my daughter Stacy for, for coming up with the design and, and making these T-shirts. That said, uh, come have a Big Lou with Big Lou at the Ig Lou and mine on the back said Big Lou and I think David said Big Dave. Joanne had one and then Tina had one, so. Didn't know we needed to, uh, make one for some special guy that, uh, has been, uh, hanging around the family, but it was good to meet him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've pretty well vetted him already, so.
That's good. All right, anything else, David?
No, thank you.
Yeah.
Cause I appreciate it and I appreciate the work that's going on and it's fun to see things happening with the streets and everything. That's just good to see progress happening. Thank you guys for doing all that. Being a part of that.
Well, thanks for all the time you, you were behind all that as well. I mean, you, you set the stage for everything that's happening right now, so. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to, uh, speak to the council at this point in time? Hearing none, we'll move on to our business items. First item up is consideration of a CDBG request for payment number one, Mr. Styles.
Actually, I'm gonna defer this to Crystal, uh, she can give you the details. These are, we'll have, we'll have several of these disbursements as this project goes forward, but this is the first one, so we try to explain it.
We've started construction on a daycare, so we're very excited about that. So this will be our first pay application, so, um, I'm not sure if you guys have copies, but the CDBG paperwork looks like this. And it's broken up into how much we're gonna ask CDBG for and how much we're going to pay on the local side, which will be the board cutting a check on the local side. Also includes, oops, the pay application from our construction company, Weens. So, um, tomorrow, Lou, when you sign all the paperwork, you'll also have to sign the pay application from Weens, just a reminder.
Sure.
And then the front page here, we'll have to have two signatures. And, um, I know that there was a signature page, I'm not sure if all you guys decided to throw on there, but exciting stuff. So I thought very first one, I want to come over here, kind of chat with you guys about how things are going. Um, so what the board has decided is on the local side, what I'll do is I'll send out an email and it'll include the city and the board and it'll tell the board, you need to cut your check for this amount, which I've already sent that email to them. And then, um, where after CDBG processes the paperwork, it's the state, they take their sweet time. When they finally send me notification that they have processed it, I'll send out another email, let Danielle know that within the next week, she should be seeing it hit the bank account and then the city has three days to cut this check. So for this pay application, the first one, we're asking ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cents from CDBG. Now, the local side, the board will cut a check for two hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. And it's all based on a percentage, so the CDBG is gonna pay twenty-five percent, the board will pay seventy-five percent each one of these. And so it's just a calculation I have to throw in there. So basically, all we need to do is have a motion today that, um, we can approve pay application number one.
Any questions? Again, just, just, uh, remember that this is a straight pass through because the city has to be the entity that the money from CDBG flows through. It isn't like we're spending any tax dollars here, this is a hundred percent CDBG money, but it has to run through us.
One thing I was gonna mention, I forgot, um, the board will cut the check, they'll take it to Danielle, so they'll both checks together. Um, just so we make it easy and none of them get lost in the mail and that kind of stuff.
So really, the only thing that, uh, we have is administrative expense, you know, to, to handle this on on Danielle's side, so. And of course, Matt's involved administratively, two and then, and a little more probably than he thought.
Oh, yeah, project managing.
Yeah, so, okay, any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to, uh, authorize, uh, payment number one of the CDBG request. Okay, Councilman Wilkins?
Second.
Councilman Bye, seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries? Very good.
I do have, while I'm here in front of you, I thought I'd give you just a quick update on one twenty-six North Main.
Sure.
Um, Eric and I are meeting with CDBG next week, they will do a walkthrough, uh, cause the, so far they've approved the application. The state will come down, we'll do a walk through the building, if they like our project, then we get to move forward. So, um, that'll happen next week.
And everybody understands which property she's talking about, it's the old town building.
Much to be requested on three?
Uh, it's three fifty, yes. CDBG now lets us do for commercial rent, we have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I think our last action on that was to increase.
Yeah, it was.
Yep, and we, we submitted the application and they, they love it, so.
Very good.
I will let you know how that goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the, uh, it, consideration of municipal policy, we have three of those to consider. And, uh, uh, I think they all relate to the same thing, but they all need to be handled separately, I believe, so, Mr. Styles?
Yeah, thank you, sir. So these are, uh, again, related to our reliable public power provider, RP three designation that we're working with, um, KPP to, to get through and it's an actually an APPA program, so there's a lot of acronyms there, so. Um, yeah, we're working with KPP on the, as a work group to get through this, to, to earn this designation, it's, uh, it's been a good process, I think, Callie's handled a lot of it for us, but it's been, it's been good. Uh, and part of that is we have to adopt these policies, which, which are things we typically do anyway. Uh, but we just have to have them in place and be able to say, hey, look, we have this policy, this is kind of how we track this thing, uh, these are, these are the things we do, so. Uh, there are three policies tonight, uh, one oh five, municipal policy one oh five is a distribution circuit inspection program. So what that means is that we will go out and, uh, inspect the distribution system, includes the substation, transmission lines on a regular basis. Uh, the policy says that we're gonna do best, basically quarter of the system every year. Uh, that's the minimum, we typically do a little bit more than that, um. We haven't necessarily been great about formalizing it, so this policy actually sets it up, so we have more of a formal policy on that. Uh, one oh six is very similar to that, but it, it's sort of a jump off of it, it says that we'll use thermographic circuit inspection, so. Uh, what we have is, we have a drone, um, that has a, a thermal camera on it that the fire department has. Luckily for us, all four of our electric people are also on the fire department, so a little cross, cross, cross collaboration there. Um, and there are actually two of them are being trained to be drone pilots, which is another piece of the puzzle to do. So, so they'll be kind of doing double duty for us on that. Uh, but yeah, so what that means is that a, as part of the inspection process, we will fly the lines using the infrared camera and uh, be able to determine if there's any hotspots within that, uh, so if you have a hotspot, like a, uh, typically you'd find it in like a transformer, uh, I mean, something's not working properly, you may need to take that out of service before it uh, takes itself out of service, so, um, that's kind of a, a, a expansion of policy one oh five, so that was one oh six. One oh seven is a quinni- quenial, can't even say that, every five years, we do a distribution assessment. Um, so this is actually something that KPP does for us, uh, every five years they come out and they walk the entire system, they'll actually, uh, measure pole density and do some other things too. Um, we last had them out here in twenty-one, we had a really good report back from that. Uh, they didn't really have any major issues that they found, they made some suggestions on where we could do some capital improvements. We've since done some of those. Um, so we're due back in twenty twenty-six to have them come back out and do it, and that's just a service that provide to membership, so. Uh, the policy basically says, yep, every five years, KPP is gonna come out and do that for us and uh, then we will respond accordingly, depending on what that has been, so. Uh, those are, those are pretty much it, is for the policies, there's really no financial impact, again, these are things we pretty much do already. Uh, we just want to make sure that we have the policy in place, we get to count that toward our RP three designation. Uh, and then, you know, as we move forward, it, it formalizes that process for us, so. Uh, we're recommending all three of these policies, they're separate action items, so you would need to take separate action on each fleet.
And I believe a voice vote on a policy is, is acceptable, so. First, uh, up will be, uh, a motion to, uh, adopt municipal policy one oh five. Would somebody care to make that motion? Councilman Bye, is there a second?
Well, second.
Councilman Wilkins, any further discussion?
Uh, I do have a question for Matt. Sorry. Um, so with, uh, policy one oh five, just going around and inspecting it, uh, if we do find any issues in the electrical system, uh, does KPP help, uh, uh, fix that, or is that just something that we're on our own?
It's typically gonna be on our own, the, really the only way they would help us on a, a fix inside the distribution system would be uh, technical assistance potentially, if it was something unusual or something that we don't have. Uh, or they, they may be able to help us source something if there's like a, an odd transformer that we don't have as replacement in the yard, for example. They can help us find that.
Okay.
Uh, they're not gonna come out and do the work, we'll end up doing it.
Okay.
But they, they also provide engineering services as well.
That's true.
So they have, uh, they, they have electrical engineering capabilities, so. Did that address the question wrong?
Okay, very good.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, next up is uh, adoption of municipal policy one oh six regarding electrical thermographic circuit inspection. Would somebody care to make that motion? Councilman Jorgensen, is there a second?
Well, second.
Councilman Wilkins, any further discussion there? And just understand that further discussion is always encouraged if somebody has a question.
You said there are two guys are doing drone pilot program?
Yeah, Todd and Billy are both, well, Todd's actually a pilot, um, we have to have a special certification for drones. And so he's, he's looking to get that, he was looking to get it for the fire department, but this will, like I say, double duty.
Okay.
Uh, Billy, same thing, he wants, he's not a pilot, but he wants to be, so.
But they're both on the fire department.
Yeah, both on the fire department.
Um, and will the city cover, uh, their license or, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Surprisingly, uh, lengthy process to do it. Wouldn't think it would be for a pilot, a drone, but it's fairly complicated. And we, I think we have, Ben was trying to do it and then those two guys, and I think there was another one or two on the fire department that were trying to get certified. So that we all, we, we have the ability to run it if we need to.
Okay, any other questions, comments? We have a motion in a second, uh, uh, I will ask for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And finally, municipal policy one oh five regarding electrical distribution assessment reporting, somebody care to make that motion? Councilman Wilkins? Is there a second?
Clear.
Councilman Bye? Is there any further discussion, questions regarding that item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and now we move on to consideration of disposal of city-owned vehicles, Mr. Styles?
Sure, so, as we, we're getting closer with the enterprise fleet management agreement, uh, moving closer to that, we need to consider what we want to do with the city-owned vehicles. Uh, part of the replacement plan that we, that was presented, the enterprise had estimate value that they could get for those at auction. Uh, we, and, and kind of reviewing what we have there, they think a hundred and forty-nine thousand, uh, which would cover a, a large chunk of the first couple, uh, year at least. Um, doesn't require us to do that, so we're not, we're not required to use their service, and after we kind of sat down and talked with it amongst our, everybody in the in staff, we felt like there were enough requests for people locally who are interested in potentially buying something. Uh, and then the police vehicles were another thing altogether, because, uh, it wa, it made more sense for us to sell a fully outfitted, less some of the equipment. Uh, police pursuit vehicle to another agency versus trying to sell it through a market, uh, through just an auction. And so, uh, Chief Hebert went and talked to Jeff, Jeff Soyes, the sheriff, a little bit, and there's some interest there. Uh, Marion Police Department may have some interest too, um, so we felt like that might be a better way and we'd probably get a higher return on our investment, uh, with that, because they would be paying also for the equipment involved. Uh, and so, you know, as we, as we kind of talked about it, we've always fared well on places like Purple Wave. Uh, and so we're asking for permission to take those city-owned vehicles and not run them through the enterprise system, but rather to run them through uh, either Purple Wave or private cell, but police vehicles, those have to go to another agency if they're not stripped out, decommissioned, so. Um, that would be what we're looking at, uh, like I say, we traditionally do really well with Purple Wave auctions, we, I'm always surprised at what we get, uh, we sell stuff and it, you think it's junk and people from all over the place will bid on it, we, like, last time we sold some stuff to the guy out of Arizona, I came up to get it. He looked at it, decided he didn't want it, but he still paid for it, and so we still have it, um, but he didn't want it, so.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not one of those things, it's registered, so you could theoretically sell it again, I guess, if you wanted to, but.
Think you wouldn't buy it again?
You might, might take a flyer on it again, I don't know, maybe he forgets, but, uh, I mean, that, that kind of stuff happens, and so um, I don't think we'll be losing anything, um, moving this way. Um, I do think we need to use something like Purple Wave, uh, because I, I don't want to get in a situation where we've got individual residents or somebody trying to come in and try to work a deal and trying to get something on, I don't think that's appropriate, but, um, having it in, in a, in a public forum where they can do that, make a bid would be the right way to do that, I, I believe. So, um, that's what we're asking for here, um, and I, I'd be happy to answer any questions when I have about it.
Um, would it be possible if, since there is still some local interest in the vehicles, if we were going to put it on Purple Wave, I don't know, you think it'd be good to post it on Facebook so that way if people are still interested, they can go that route versus?
Yeah, we'll, we'll absolutely put it out there to everybody, um, and I guess the important thing here is we wouldn't sell these until until we had the enterprise vehicles coming in, cause you'd be without vehicles, uh, especially police cars, so. Uh, there'll be a little bit of a delay then in the, how that would typically happen, if enterprise took it, it would happen fairly quickly, but there's a little bit of a delay using Purple Wave, so, uh, but yes, absolutely, it would be something that we, uh, post. You know, if anybody asks, could we buy that vehicle, then we direct them to that, so.
The, um, the permission or the, uh, authority you're asking for, that's gonna be something that would be considered in perpetuity relative to this program?
Yeah, we've only got so many of these vehicles, so yeah, we would, until we were done with them, there's fourteen, I think.
I guess my point is, is that once we cycle through and we, the oldest vehicle we have is three years old, are we still planning to, to go that route?
No, so once we're in, into the lease agreement with a, a leased vehicle with enterprise, then it has to go through their, their process.
These are only gonna be vehicles that we currently own.
Currently own, yes. Sorry, yes.
I just want to make sure.
That's, that's, that's true, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all would accept a motion to, uh, uh, re- approve the staff request for permission to sell the city-owned vehicles, making that clear. Uh, using public auction sites or private placement for law enforcement agencies. Okay. Councilman Jorgensen moves, Councilman Wilkins, you second? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item up is consideration of Hillsboro Ford vouchers totaling fifty-six dollars and seventy-six cents, Mr. Styles.
I just got an oil change on a lease vehicle this time.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to authorize the Hillsboro Ford voucher totaling fifty-six seventy-six for payment.
I might have a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second? Second. Councilman Wilkins, seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Abstaining.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Three votes and one abstention. Um, item seven, consideration of merit increase for eligible employees, Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So, uh, during our, our budget process last year, we included a cost of living increase that would take effect in January, of course, you guys approved either, either one of these, but, uh, January four percent cost of living increase, and that was really kind of trying to make up a little bit of ground, because there, we weren't keeping up with inflation. Uh, and then we also programmed in a two percent merit increase for the middle part of the year, um, and that was, of course, based on if you had a performance uh, through the evaluation process that was acceptable. Um, there's a little bit of room there with department heads, we basically say you can go up to two percent, I think most of them have. There was one si- situation that's not quite that, but, um, so what we did with that, we moved everybody last year to a uh, evaluation process that takes place in summer, so everybody has to have their evaluation basically completed by the end of June, and then we have this conversation with council in July, and then we apply it back to that, to that time, so. Um, the way we have done it in the past is basically anybody who's outside of the, or still in their probationary period, so the ninety-day probationary period when you get hired, uh, they're not eligible for that, the presumption is there that you, you've negotiated a salary that's appropriate at that point, uh, when you started, so. They actually have five positions that aren't eligible for merit increase this time, uh, so three full-time position, or full-time position, well, they're all full-time positions, but one's empty right now. Uh, but then we've got new people in the other position, so there's five, it's about seventeen percent of the workforce that is not eligible for this. Uh, we do include permanent part-time folks and then, uh, just full-time positions, so there's no seasonal people, there's no there's nobody like that, there will be cool people, none of that, that's not happening. Um, so we, we have our evaluation process, I think everybody's nearly complete, we'll have them all wrapped up by next, uh, next week. Uh, there's, with the holiday being this week, I don't think everybody got them in yet, I know, I know there's some that haven't, but they're all done, they just haven't had a chance to sit down with their employees, so. Um, I think this is the third year we've kind of used this in employee tool, I think people are starting to get a little bit more familiar with it, I've seen a little bit more particular grading, uh, grading, say grading, evaluating, I guess is the right word. Um, so people are, are, you know, less inclined to just get by the way across, um, I think people have gotten kind of dialed in. Uh, so I, I feel like these are pretty legitimate, um, and, and the ones I've reviewed so far. Um, sort of how we do other pay things, there's other things rather than merit that trigger pay increases, so if you've completed certain milestones in training, like you've got your licensing for water or wastewater, you complete other training, um, like lineman training, we, there's automatic increases built into that. If you change positions, do things like that, there's also some changes there too. Um, so we went back through and looked at kind of where this is financially for us. Uh, total for fifteen, it'd be about fifteen thousand, seven hundred. Uh, they were included in the budget and I think there are sufficient resources based on what we've seen. Uh, if everything kind of stays the same, uh, we don't have any major emergencies or lots of overtime or something like that, that's unforeseen. Uh, we should be able to operate pretty well within that. Um, so what we, we've talked about is this, if this was approved, we kind of rolled into the next pay period, which would start on the seventh. You could opt to go back to, uh, we, I talked with Crystal this morning, and the last time we did one of these, we actually did a split payroll, so, right in the middle of a pay period right now, if you said yes today, you could go back to the beginning of the week and do it. I don't know that it makes that much difference, I thought it would be easier if we just said on the seventh through the twentieth. Um, that was your payroll, and we get in July twenty-fifth. It's up to you if you want to do that, um. That would just be kind of a preference, uh, on the councils' wise. Um, like I said, not, I haven't seen them all, I haven't approved all the final ones, but I would anticipate most of those being done by the end of this week. Uh, and then most of the eligible people, um, I, all of them I've seen except for one have been up to two percent, so I think that's been kind of common. Uh, but again, about seventeen percent of the workforce is not eligible, so we'll not be receiving that at this time, so. Uh, we're recommending moving forward with it, uh, with the planned merit increase, there's kind of a breakout there for you, if you want to talk about where that money is or what it is or how it's applied, um, happy to do that too.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, you mentioned earlier, uh, that the four percent cost of living is just to keep up with inflation, cause we haven't kept up in the past.
Yeah.
Uh, so does that mean going forward in the, I know we're not to that point yet, but uh, when we go for the twenty twenty-five budget, would, would there be talk of potentially decreasing that or keeping it steady, or?
Yeah.
I guess what's the typical?
That's a good question, uh, how we've done it in the past, we've really kind of tied it to the Consumer Price Index rightly or wrongly, uh, a lot of people do that. Um, and then, you know, we've looked at it kind of cumulatively over the years, and when I say we made up for it, there were a couple of years there where we were just not making it up, um, I, I would say. Making it up. Um, I, I would say as we look at the budget for next year, we probably want to just hang around that. That Consumer Price Index, I think is about two and a half percent right now. Um, again, that's completely, completely up to the council. If you feel like that's not enough or. You know, cost of eggs is way more than that and maybe that's not a real number. You know, you could always do that too. Or if you say that's, you know what, everybody's doing pretty good. That would be fine too. Um, yeah, we usually tie it to something like the Consumer Price Index.
Okay. Well then that would mean that. Uh, of course, can, uh, contention on their evaluation, our employees could be looking at up to six percent. Um, increase in wages then is.
That's in this current, for this year.
Oh yeah, for this year. Okay.
It wouldn't be for the full year. I mean, technically doing the merit in the middle of the year for the calendar year, you're really only getting another one percent. When you think about that, but it does, that is accumulated though. Um, so yeah, it does move into the next year.
Well, I mean, if I can just speak openly for a second. Um, I think that the city is willing to potentially give an increase at all of that much is, I mean, nice because there are a lot of. Uh, and, you know, employers that don't give any type of merit or cost of living increase. So the fact that the city is willing to. Do that for its employees, I think is, I think that's pretty commendable, honestly. So. But that's the end of my questions then.
Again, questions are always appreciated. There's never a bad question and. You know, we want to make sure that when we're making decisions, that we understand the decisions that we're making clearly. And, uh, you know, it's always, it's always interesting to me, you know, as we look towards this upcoming budget. You know, will we have any input? Because, uh, in the six years that I've been mayor so far, I've had zero. Budget input from, uh, from the citizenry. So that's been interesting, you know. You, you, you hope you're doing the right thing. You hope you're doing the things that people want you to do, but sometimes it's. It's a guessing game, you know? You know, you do, we just do the best we can at the end of the day. That's all we can do. So. So, and, and, and technically I would say to a certain extent, this decision has already been made. I mean, we made this decision, you know, when we. It was, it was part of the budget. I mean, you know, we approved this action, but I guess. And to, today we're more, it's more of an affirmation than.
Well, it's in there. Uh, nah, well, yeah, yeah. You approved it when we did the budget, but it's, you know, I always think when you're doing any kind of. Raises like that, that needs to be, uh, and, and I.
I don't disagree, you know, but, but again, I just want to make it clear that, you know, you didn't just come up with this. You know, this was something that the council gave you direction and approval to do already. So. Okay.
So from what I understand, the only discretion involved really is on how much of the two percent, but did you mention that most all? I guess supervisors are, are going with the two.
They're going with two percent. There's only one that I know that hasn't.
And is that due to performance issues?
Yeah, I, I think they want to kind of, from that perspective, they wanted to stagger that. Um, there was a performance issue they wanted to adjust and then if. Come back later potentially and look at it if, if they get through it. So. Try to give department heads as much flexibility with that as they can. Cause I, you know, it's hard, it's hard to sit there and say, you know, you, you, you're falling short here. You don't deserve as much as this guy I work with every day, but. You know, there, that can be a pretty powerful tool in their toolbox if they, they choose to use it.
Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, I would, uh, accept a motion to approve the staff recommendation that, uh. That, uh, moving forward with the plan two percent merit pay increase. Councilman Wilkins moves. Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Styles. And, uh, I appreciate, uh, the way this is getting people involved in an evaluation. I mean. I've had, men, maybe, maybe all of us have had jobs where you'd ever got about an evaluation and you ever. You know, you just assumed that you were doing okay and things were fine, but, uh, you know, evaluations are important, I think. That feedback and it gives, uh, gives a supervisor and an employee a, a, a time to, to really, you know. Make sure they're on the same page. So I think it's important. So I appreciate you getting that done and, and, and. Holding people accountable to, to get it done. So.
Well, I'd also mention, we do, uh, we do goal setting to, um, so everybody's required to set one goal for themselves as an employee. Uh, and, and work with their supervisor. Some people have a form that has three. Some people go all three. Some people do one, some are way more complicated than others, but it's still that opportunity to, to, you know, have where we want to improve this next year. So. It's kind of part of that process too.
Good stuff. All right. Next item up is an executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one. For a period of, how much time do you think, folks? Twenty minutes, thirty minutes? Twenty minutes? At the council reconvening here in, at, uh, seven twenty-six. Would somebody care to make that motion? Councilman, by moves?
Move that the city council recess into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant. To KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one for a period of twenty minutes. The meeting will include the city administrator and city attorney. The open meeting will resume at seven twenty-seven.
Very good.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now in executive session. Okay, we are now back in open session. Uh, let the record state that no action was taken. During our executive session. And, uh, at this point, uh. Would, uh, we, we were looking for a motion to address, uh, the two percent, uh, merit increase for Matt. Would somebody care to make that motion? Councilman by moves, Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Matt, for everything. We appreciate.
I appreciate the city. Been, uh, a good four years. Hard to believe it's been four years.
So, uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, well done, Matt. And, uh.
Welcome, Marianne. Hope it's been good for you.
Okay, now we have some discussion, uh, that we need to cover and that is regarding the twenty twenty-five budget introduction. Priorities, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, so the calendar hits kind of a weird time this year. Um. We have to make some decisions about the R and R, which is revenue neutral rate before the twentieth. Well, I actually have another meeting. And I don't really have a ton of the actual budget done, but the, the stuff that we need to cover is. Need to share it so that the people on, find people on Zoom can see it as well.
And when you share it on Zoom, it also becomes part of the recording, correct?
Yes, sir. All right. So this is just kind of the introductory discussion. I just wanted to walk through where we're at on some things and kind of give you, I always. Provide a little background information as far as how we compare to other people, what the tax rates look like here. Um, so this is the twenty-four property tax bill that everybody would have received. They got, uh, charged a hundred and eighty-two point seven zero nine mils. Uh, kind of how that breaks out. Uh, the city was twenty-two percent of that. We actually approved through last year's budget process. Forty-two point one three nine, which is a reduction from the previous year. Uh, when they finalized the assessments in November, they actually ended up reducing it's more. Uh, so when Dan, we, the growth was more and so they adjust that as it goes. So at the end of the day, we only levied, uh, basically forty-one mils. Um, which is a little bit less, about a mil, a little over a mil less than what we actually approved. Uh, the county, they're always the biggest chunk. They're at forty-two percent, seventy-six mils almost. Um. So we'll see what they end up doing this year. Uh, USC four-ten, they're the second biggest chunk at thirty-four percent. Um. Sixty-one total mils, twenty of that is required by the state. Um, so really the local option version of what their budget is or portion of their budget is. Forty-one mils. The state gets their one and a half percent or one, one point five mils. Extension gets two point six four and that makes up your entire tax bill. Um, what that looks like for the regular house. Uh, median home value this year actually went up about five thousand dollars. Um, so you can kind of see where. Uh, the, the home, uh, home buyers have, have kind of driven prices up. The evaluations have kind of gone up and so you can kind of see what that looks like. Um, so the average tax bill on that ninety-five thousand dollar house is two thousand bucks of that. The city will get four hundred and, not, not quite four fifty. Uh, the county will get eight hundred and thirty-one dollars, six hundred and seventy-five goes to this, uh, school district. The state gets off easy at sixteen and extension, all the services they provide, you will only pay twenty-nine dollars for. So. That's kind of how the impact looks. Um, so when somebody asks you, usually the question we get is why are my taxes so high? And I usually say, well. As a proportion, you, you need to talk to your county commissioner because they are the ones that are the highest on, on this list. Um. Most people are pretty good with the school district, but it's, it's usually that county one that gets people. Uh, mill levy comparison. So this is, I, I always caution people not to do this. Um, I, when I teach my budgeting class, you know, I don't think it's. It's, it's not really fair to compare these cities, but it inevitably happens, right? Um, so everybody in Marion County like, oh, how do we relate to the city of Marion? We are not like the city of Marion in a lot of different ways. Um. They're a, a significantly smaller assessed valuation tax base than we do. And so it's not really an apples to apples, but it always comes up. Um, so what I did here is I went back and I pulled the numbers and compared them from last year. Um, so if it's in green, it means it decreased from the previous year. Blue means it's an increase. So, uh, we were, you know, at forty. Biggest community, kind of have the, the widest range of services. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we're at. The only, the only ones that have lower tax levies are, are cities like Durham and Moss Springs who don't offer. Anywhere near the same level of service that we do. Um, they don't have the same number of people either. So. I can kind of see where Marion is. Uh, Peabody jumped up pretty significantly. Uh, Lawrence did as well. Lehigh. Oh, you can't just see where those are at. Um, so overall, as, as far as a community within Marion County, we're doing pretty well. Uh, peer cities, I actually pull a group that it looks a little bit more like us. So the city of Norton, Kingman and Osage City. Are pretty similar in size and tax base, uh, try to match up if they have utilities, uh, similar utilities. Fire service, that sort of thing. Uh, Kingman actually has. Uh, they run ambulance service for themselves in the county, but they get a reimbursement, an offset reimbursement from the county for that. So you can kind of see, if you wanted to say, well, what's more like a real true apples to apples, those are the people that are, are more like us. Um, and we do pretty well, uh, compared to them. So, you know, Osage City, the county level, the overall mill levy is a little lower, but everybody else we're pretty favorable. So that's kind of what it looks like. Um, assessed valuation growth, this is, this is the good news. Um, our assessed valuation went up about eight percent. Um, from year to year, which is great. Uh, when we looked at, well, for example, when Greg Barnberg did the financial analysis for us at the last meeting. When we did the bond issue, they always plug in three percent and pretty steady three percent. So eight percent actually puts us somewhere closer to what they thought we would be in twenty twenty-six. Twenty-seven. So we're doing well with that. Uh, we did have a couple oddball years there. Um, in twenty-one, it dropped down. Don't real, I don't really know exactly why that is. Uh, thought it had something to do with the hospital at that point, transitioning, um. Cause we were building it at that point. So might be that. Um. Overall, from, from twenty twenty to this year, we've increased twenty-nine percent. Um, I do a, a, a compound annual growth comp. A calculation on that too. So it's roughly about four percent a year. It's been growing. So that's pretty good. Um, for this year, if we were to hold the mill levy flat for what we, uh, approved, we would generate another seventy-three thousand dollars. So. That's kind of where it lands right now. Uh, then we'll talk about the revenue neutrality. So here's what we adopted. Um, in twenty twenty-four, you can kind of see what we, the numbers we had in there. In the parentheses is what was adjusted out to. Once they finished the valuation in November. So you could see it went down, obviously. Um. You know, it's kind of what the general fund is. Debt service is, is usually around five mils. We've got an agreement with the library. Uh, we've got ordinance on the industrial, special law enforcement. Rec commission that those are set at those numbers. Um, they're capped at those numbers. So. What we've traditionally done, we sell the ones I've done and at least the last ten before that, they basically just levy that amount. For that, and then the, the rec commission, the industrial fund, law enforcement, the library, they just sort of deal with whatever. They can do with that amount of money. So. Um, then the revenue neutral rate, so that basically says that you, you're going to cap your, your revenue at the same amount. Um, and in order to do that, you have to compensate by cutting your mill levy back, uh, to do that. And so what the revenue neutral rate that was computed by the county for us for this year was actually thirty-seven point nine. So it would end up being. Uh, pretty significant drop if you were to keep the revenue neutral rate. You can kind of see how that shuffles down through there. Uh, again, with the library and the, the industrial and the rec commission, I mean, those, those folks are really counting on that one mil. So. You really probably can't, well, you probably shouldn't, I guess, we should say. You could, uh, you probably shouldn't cut them down. Even though it's pretty small, they don't have a lot of money to start with. So they're kind of expecting to get their full, full, full amount. So really that cut would really need to have, have to come out of the general fund. And frankly, the debt service may have to increase too, if you're going to drop that down too. So. The, the real conversation we have to have is, you know, are we going to do revenue neutral? We're going to choose. Choose to continue with what we, what we've been at. We may even actually end up reducing it, but maybe not to the same amount that the revenue neutral rate is. So. We have to make that decision. Um. By July twentieth. Um, so that's how that has to work. Right now, we're just removed, just looking at the basic stuff. So at the sixteenth meeting, we should have a draft budget for you to look at. Uh, you need to consider adopting the R and R hearing if that's something you wanted to do. Uh. We have to make that decision. We're going to keep it. Uh, if we choose not to exceed the R and R, that, that puts us on a different timetable than if we do. Um, the not to exceed, uh, revenue neutral rate puts us into the same old standard budget. Process that was like this for many, many years. We have to prove it by the end of August. Um. So we would have a review meeting on the sixth of August and a budget hearing and adoption on the twentieth. If you chose to exceed the revenue neutral rate, we would have more time to look at it in August and kind of tinker with it. Uh, you can't hold the hearing for a revenue neutral rate. Uh, it has to be between August twentieth and September twentieth. So there's, there's. Rules now in the state for that, how that has to work. Uh, and then hearings, just a special note on that. Hearings have to be published within the newspaper, not on the city website. With at least ten days before the hearing. So there's some things that have to happen there too. Um, so when we think about how that looks, we have to measure back ten days. And then we'll look at the publication deadlines to make all that match up. Uh, so priorities, thinking about kind of what we want to do. Uh, this is real thirty thousand foot level thinking on it. Um, first thing I always put in there is, you know, employee wages, benefit management. Employees are our best resource. They're our most expensive piece, but also they're the thing to make the city go. So. I always, I always try to work in something to make sure that we're taking care of them and, you know, that, that is, I think. To the benefit of the organization long-term to have good employees and, and keep them in a decent, uh, competitive spot. Couple of things that we have, we've got agreements with the senior center. That's a year-to-year thing. Uh, we've been doing ten thousand a year there. Uh. The entrepreneurship center funding with Tabor, that's thirty thousand. We got, we increased that last year. Um, so that's something we do. Uh, that we, we have factored in twenty thousand, so at twenty-five actually this year for high school improvement projects. That's this thing that happens in the fall. We don't know who the instructor is going to be this year or what that. That's this thing that happens in the fall. We don't know who the instructor is going to be this year, or what that's going to look like. So what we've kind of done is just put a chunk of money in there and say, what we can do with that is what we can do. Um, childcare support, uh, for the childcare center, not child support, we're not doing child support. Childcare center support is kind of a question mark. Um. You know, there may be some, something there that we would want to look at doing. I don't know what that's going to look like. They should be open next year, early, early part of the year. Uh, I think based on the business model that they're going to need to do some fundraising outside of, of normal operations, especially the first year. So there may be something you want to think about there. Uh, we got the fleet management, so the cost of that's about two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand. Um. We got multiple departments, we're going to have savings that help pay for that. We're going to have the sale of vehicles that pays for part of that too, so. Um, that is something that we know, it's a known deal. Then, of course, we have all of our debt service. Uh, we'll have a new, new, some new debt service coming on through the projects we're doing now. So I have to maintain that, you know, the first thing you always do is pay your bills, pay your debt, and you kind of work down from there. Um, operational change with the bowling alley, that's something that, you know, if they come on board. Um, what Danielle and I talked about today is we're, we're really leaning toward just segregating that and making it its own thing. Um, doing a couple of checks and balances on it, but just keeping the money that's generated there, there. And then, you know, building it up into a position that if, at some time in the future, looking for a buyer, then we would have. Invested back in it and kept it kind of as its own discreet business unit. Think that makes the most sense for us. You could blow it open and use it and like, you kind of do the golf course, but I don't, I don't think we really want to get into that. I would prefer it just to be its own thing. Uh, we provide the ownership and. A little bit of management, a little bit of oversight on the financial stuff, but. It kind of does its thing. Yeah. I think the, the lower, lower touch we have on that operationally is probably better from that perspective, but. That's just my, that's just my view. If you want to take it and do something different, let's have that conversation too. Uh, revenues kind of coming in, looking at what we got revenue-wise, interest in our idle funds. I'm probably going to decrease that this next year. We've been doing really well. I mean, been bringing in over ten thousand a month on interest uh, generated. But kind of looking, reading the tea leaves with the Fed and maybe making a rate change later in the year, probably ought to back that down a little bit. Um, sales tax projections, been flat, I've kept it flat for the last three years. Um, and we're, we're actually tailing off a little bit from our highs. Um, and they're coming down a little bit, they're not drastic, but. It's enough to say, you know, we'll probably keep it flat. We don't really want to give into the temptation to make it larger. Uh, we're going to pursue more grant opportunities, so there's some things in there we need to be thinking about. We have, still have the KDAG pilot project that's going to need to get done. Um, and Morgan will be here next meeting to kind of talk about that and some other things. Got those road projects out there, if we have any grant projects that come up, add those things. Uh, and then, of course, in November, we, we set up the utility review uh, for the rates, and they'll also bring back credit card fees. It's something that we'll make sure we talk about again too, so. That's kind of the thirty thousand foot picture. So, you know, my, my question to you is there's things in there that we haven't talked about that we need to put in there. That there's things that are front burner for you guys as a council that we need to include in the, in the discussions when we start going through department heads. And my next step is going to be to do the revenue side, and then I'll actually have all the department head meetings, and what we'll do is. Kind of build a, an ideal budget, and then we'll work backwards from that to, to get it to make it fit, so. Thoughts on what you want to see?
The only one I would say is at some point, uh, we've got some. Um, financing that will be retiring, I believe, starting next year in twenty-four. Or this year, is it this year or next year, twenty-five and twenty-six, we'll have some bonds retiring.
Yeah, they'll start to come off.
And, you know, we really need to start thinking seriously about what we're going to do with this new fire station. We got to do it, it needs to be done, and, you know, we just need, going to have to figure out how we, how we pay for it.
Yep.
And so I think it's time to start getting real about that. So, you know, it's all been theoretical up to, up to this point.
True.
But I think it's time to, you know, if we're going to go Monday and look at stuff. You know, think we need to start getting real with it, so that's just my opinion. I would also, you know, from a question standpoint, um, uh. Did it cost, is it going to cost us less to operate the city next year than it is this year?
Probably not, no.
Okay. You know, so as we think about, we don't have to make that decision today, but as we think about the revenue neutral rate. You know, that's hard, it's really unrealistic in my mind to maintain a revenue neutral rate. Unless, you know, your costs are, are, are staying, are stable, or going down. You know, and, and, uh, you know, there's, we've done a lot of things for efficiencies. We've also, you know, another, another calculation as we go through the budget process, it might be a value. And you did it a little bit this last year was how much, what the value of, uh, or. The increased value we're getting from things like grants and, and extra revenues. That's not having to come out of our, or not having to increase our taxes because. We've been smart about being able to get grants and, and find alternative sources of funding. For the projects that we're trying to do, so I think some of that needs to be calculated or factored in a little bit. As, as we may or may not have those conversations, you know. Um, again, the people don't seem to, to have those conversations, but uh. Maybe the press likes to have those conversations, I would say, so. You know, I, I'm, I'm, I just find it very, uh, very uncomfortable to think that, that we can do it for less. And so, you know, that really becomes a moot point. The other question I would have is. At what point do we have to start paying for the notifications? For the revenue neutral rate, because that's a, that's a mailing that has to happen as well. It's not just published in the paper, but it'll have to be a mailing, correct?
Yeah, so what they do is, uh, every jurisdiction who's making that change, yeah, they get the mail-in one statement, so you would. Divide that cost, but there's still a cost, and when, I'm not sure when that actually takes.
You send all that information to the county, the county's the one that sends out all the notices, bills, you, I don't know exactly where that comes in. But it's, it's soon after you submitted, you know, by the July twentieth deadline.
But I mean, is that, is that, are those costs going to be pushed back down to us? That's my question. You know, and, and, and initially, when, when the legislature put this law into place. Um, you know, there was, there was some period of years where they were going to cover that cost. And now I, I'm wondering if we're not getting close to the time where that cost isn't being, going to be covered anymore. So maybe that's something we need to find out too.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into that.
Any other comments or questions regarding our budget discussion at this point? Okay, so let's move into a land bank meeting. We've got a bill to pay, so. I will now call the meeting of the land banks of the Hillsboro to order. Uh, we have a couple items there. First is approval of minutes of our April sixteen, twenty-twenty-four meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Councilman Bye moves, is there a second? Councilman Wilkins seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is approval of vouchers totaling fourteen hundred and seventy-five dollars for some mowing. Uh, by Plenter Mowing, areas one, two, and four. Uh, any questions regarding that invoice? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to authorize that invoice for payment.
Oh, my God.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second? Councilman Jorgensen seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we will now move from the land bank meeting, we'll close that and move back to the city council meeting. Where we are at city administrators report.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, let's start out here. Uh, Flint Hills Regional Council, Mayor and I went to their meeting on the twenty-first. Um, Mike Couch, he's their executive director, he asked me to present on strategic planning, uh, with some emphasis on housing and childcare. We spent a lot of time talking about housing, um, which I think it went really well. We had a lot of, a lot of housing questions. Uh, I felt like it went pretty well. Uh, I think we're, we're doing a lot compared to some of the other communities in there. Who are kind of struggling with some things, so, uh, hopefully they'll be able to get, take something out of that.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
And then they asked, uh, Janet Williams asked me to, to help with a grant that they have specifically for entrepreneurship. Um, they were asking for some advice on how to kind of perceive the stuff, so I was working on that with them. We'll see where that goes, I'm not sure. Uh, street projects, votes park has got that weird work on A Street, they're almost finished pouring. I think they got a little bit of delay because of some rain. Um, they're going to get that wrapped up all next week, and then they've got another job they have to pull out and do. Uh, but that A Street will be completely finished and open to the public. Uh, then they, well, it wouldn't be. It'll be next week, it'll be the week after, so, um, they'll open that up, and so that'll all be finished, and then they'll come back, uh, early part of August, and. They're going to try to knock out the, the south leg of that, which goes up to Tabor parking lots, uh, down to B Street. And then they'll move on to the north piece. I don't think they're going to get it done by the time school is open, or at least it, it may be done, but it won't be drivable until, for another week after that. Um, we'll see, I'm not holding my breath on that one. Uh, but at least they've got that intersection done, which was a really critical piece. Um, and then we did have a meeting, uh, with the residents over from Lincoln and Wilson Street. I think we have mostly Lincoln Street folks, there's two. Yeah, um, talked about that, Darren, uh, had talked about it being a late fall, early spring project. I think he told us that it was going to be earlier than that, but it didn't, it hasn't worked out that way. Uh, but we did get some input from people about. Uh, the design and kind of what the preferences are, so hopefully we'll get, we'll have a few more of those meetings, I think, before, at the, or the project actually goes, so. Uh, fire station meeting, we had a committee meeting on that on the twenty-sixth, uh, we're going, the mayor mentioned, we're going out to, to Hutch to look at. Uh, the station in Burton, and maybe, maybe try to jump into Halsted since it's on the way. Um, take a look at that. Uh, hope to hear more back on our, our congressional appropriation on July eighth, so we'll see on that. Uh, Networks Plus, Danielle and I met with them. We have a strategic, they call it a strategic positioning meeting every year. Uh, just kind of look at what we need to look at for the budget and kind of what that is. We're going to do some more replacements. Uh, we did increase our service hours for months, we were finding we were going over that, and it's cheaper if you buy a minimum block. Uh, so we did increase those. Are also considering a new proactive service they have called, uh, endpoint zero trust. Um, we're going to look at a, we're going to have a demonstration of that, I think, coming up. I haven't got it scheduled yet, but. Um, that is a pretty, pretty aggressive way to avoid cybersecurity threats and. Really sensitive to that, we don't want to be on the list of people who've had problems with that, so. Uh, it may be a good investment for us, and hopefully we'll, we'll take a look at that and see. Uh, Kansas Commerce is coming to town, Kelly and I invited them, uh, to come in August. I think it's going to be the first Monday in August. Just to talk about potential projects, they've got a lot of different programs. They kind of come out as a group, and we're going to walk them around downtown and some other areas and say, hey, what do you got that can help us with this? Here's what we're thinking, what do you have? Uh, we're going to buy them lunch, try to make some personal connections, get some advice, um, hope for some more opportunities with them. Uh, childcare project, Crystal kind of talked about that. Uh, the only thing I would note on that is that. Uh, Brown, State Brownsfield's program gave us fifty thousand dollars to do a removal of asbestos tile in the building. Ended up finding more, uh, but they gave us fifty there, that, that fifty is the amount they'll give us, so. Uh, they're actually doing that remediation work this week. Uh, Tristan, she's board chair. She's normally been handling this project, she's going to be out for twelve weeks on maternity leave, and so they picked me to do that project, so I'm going to be project managing it. You're the heart of this whole project. I, I, I still think she planned it that way. Okay, though, it'll be fun, it'll be, we got good people on board and they can help with that too, so. Uh, kitchen hall, our city hall kitchen refresh, Ed, our, our custodian is going to be doing some. Uh, refresh stuff in there, you know, you buy new appliances and start looking around thinking, yeah, maybe we should. Maybe we should do something else with this, and that's kind of how that started. Um, so we're going to be doing some countertop work, painting on the countertops and the cabinets and. Uh, maybe the backsplash and some other things, it's going to look nice. Just doing a little bit, it's a pretty small project, but it's something that I think will improve the appearance. Uh, the Cal Ripken tournament, Dave Ediger started yesterday full-time for us, and he's on the ground running on that. So excited for that. Um, the, the Cal Ripken tournament scaled back from the original vision that we had talked about when Jerry was running it. Uh, but I think it's going to be really a successful event. Got the schedule put out, we've got some things going on it. I know David was working on getting the programming tied up. So there's still, I still think there's some opportunities for people if they want to volunteer. Uh, but the, the window has narrowed significantly as to what we have to do, so. Uh, if anyone's interested in that, I would highly suggest they get ahold of David. He's got a list of people who've signed up, and I know he's been reaching out, so. Uh, if you don't hear from him, call him, and we'll get you on there to help. Uh, in that tournament's on the eighteenth of July through the twenty-first, that's a Thursday through Sunday, so. Uh, and then I'm going to be out on vacation first through twenty-eighth, so, uh, yeah, that's where we're at. Okay, so everything I got today, any questions?
What does scaled back mean on that, on that tournament? Is that like services we provide to the tournament, or is it?
Uh.
Tournament or?
So there were like ten committees that were set up to do different things. I think we've, we've really kind of narrowed down that list of things that we're going to do. Um, they were, they were beyond what we were required to do. And then also, we were talking about using the Tabor dorms to stay, uh, for kids to stay. And that really wasn't working out for Tabor, um, because that next week they have RAs and stuff coming in, and so there was a lot of concern that. We rented out to these kids, they're going to wreck it, and then we're going to have time to fix it, and. Um, if the tournament were a week earlier, they maybe could have worked out, but just didn't do that, so. Uh, I think a lot of the committees that were sort of envisioned at the start have been condensed down, and that's what I mean by kind of scaled back.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will open it up to our final public comment opportunity. I don't see anybody in the room or online. So we'll go ahead and close that out and go to council comments. Councilman Jorgensen?
Uh, nothing.
Councilman Wilkins?
Um, just like to thank all the department heads that took the time to do their evaluations and. Though sometimes it's not easy doing them, and, you know, having to really think about what people need to improve, but, uh, people will. Never grow if they don't know where they need to start, so also like to thank Matt for what he's done as well. That's all I got, thank you.
Councilman McCarty?
Nothing.
Councilman Bye?
Uh, I got a comment from somebody about Elm Street. I guess when they were doing, airing up the yard for the childcare center. I guess there's a bunch of trucks that are coming off on Elm, dragging bud, and they were complaining that. That was, uh, making it hard to drive on the street.
Gotcha.
That is all I have.
Address that with the contractor.
Rain might have got taken that.
Again, uh, David already mentioned it, but thanks for everybody that came out for a, a big Lou with Big Lou at the Igloo last night. They had a great time, and, uh, I always enjoy that opportunity, so. With no other business that needs to come before the council, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
I was on call last night and.